I'd like to call the Garden Grove City Council Meeting and the Agency for Community Development to order. Madam Clerk, would you call roll for both, please?
Councilmember Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Winn, Mayor Pro Tem Jones, Mayor Dalton.
Here. Okay, we're going to have two closed session or three closed session items. Two for the agency and one for the council. The agency items are conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.8 involving properties on Harbor. And the conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.8, also Harbor Boulevard. And for the council, we'll conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, a significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.9B. I'll open oral communications at this time. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on these matters? If you see none, I'll close our communications and we'll recess to the closed session.
We'll now call the meeting for the Garden Grove Housing Authority. Madam Clerk, could you please take roll?
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Dalton.
Here.
Commissioner Doe.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Here.
Vice Chair Broadwater.
Here.
Chair Winn.
Here. We'll go to item one, oral communications. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards for the oral communications? Okay, hearing none. Any commissioner comments? None. We'll go to item two, consent items.
You have a motion to approve?
Move the balance. Move the balance.
Call for the vote.
Second.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now go to public hearings, item three.
Madam Chair, item three is a public hearing to consider the Housing Authority 2011 Annual Plan. And Danny Hune is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is the Fiscal Year 2011 Annual Plan. The Housing Authority is required to submit this plan to HUD prior to April 15, 2011. The Garden Grove Housing Authority receive a score of 99 out of a possible 100 for Fiscal Year 2010, which qualifies the authority as the high-performing agency. As a high-performing agency, the authority is only required to complete an abbreviated format of the annual plan. A resident advisory board comprised of six tenant participants of the Housing Choice Voucher Program has reviewed the plan, and the comments are attached. The public hearing was properly noticed on January 6 and 13. It is recommended that the Housing Authority conduct the public hearing and adopt the 2011 Annual Plan. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none. I want to congratulate the staff on their high performances. We have, do we have to vote on this item?
Can we open the public hearing first?
Okay. The public hearing is open. Do I have any comments? Okay, hearing none. I will close the public comments.
Now you can entertain a motion.
Do I have a motion?
Move the adopt second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. There are no items for consideration. Do we have any matters from Commissioners and Directors? Okay, we don't have any. So the Housing Authority is adjourned. The next meeting is going to be held on Tuesday, April 26, 2011, at 6:30 in the council's chambers.
At this time, I'd like to call the Garden Grove City Council Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Winn.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Here.
Mayor Dalton.
Here. We'll have the invocation by Keith Jones, Public Works Director, and the pledge of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Dear Lord, we ask for your blessing over this meeting. In the midst of the busy and complex world we live, let your will be clear and let your will be done. Amen.
Amen.
Everyone, please face our great flag and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the council meeting, we had a closed session, but there was no reportable action. Okay, see, we have a presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our first presenter is from Griffin Structures to present a check to the city for underwriting the costs of bringing the moving wall to Garden Grove. And if Roger, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Fertile, and members of the council. Honorable Mayor Dalton, if I might indulge and say a couple of words, I think might be relative. I'm a member of the Vietnam War Museum Exploratory Committee here in Garden Grove. As you know, this committee is seeking to perhaps bring a war museum to Garden Grove. We believe that a Vietnam War Museum would serve as a unique commemorative for all those who were affected by the Vietnam War. By being so close to Little Saigon, this memorial would include unique perspectives regarding the war and would be the only museum of its kind on the West Coast. In addition, the museum discussed the possibility of bringing the moving wall, which is the original half-size replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington City, to Garden Grove. We're very pleased to announce that we were selected as one of three California stops, and this will be here in Garden Grove, October 6 through the 10th of this year. So this evening, as CEO of Griffin Structures and member of the advisory committee, I'm pleased to give a check in the amount of $6,000, which is payable to the Vietnam War Museum of America to assist in bringing this moving wall to the city. It's a privilege for me to be part of bringing such a special monument to the city of Garden Grove. As I hope that the development of the war museum will be a permanent memorial honoring the thousands of men and women who died serving our country in the Vietnam War. This war having been sort of a war of my generation, I particularly have a deep feeling for it, so I'm very pleased to have this chance to do this. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
It's a large check.
Why don't you come up here and go get your picture taken with the check?
Does that every time?
The bigger the check, the thinner you are.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you very much. Now can you tell us where night deposit, we can put this size check in?
I'd cash it right away.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a community spotlight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like Keith Jones to make this special presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fertile. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize the outstanding community service recently performed by a high school senior who led the effort to refurbish the "Welcome to Little Saigon" signs in Garden Grove. Would Diana Pham, please come forward. In 2003, two monument signs were installed in the center medians on Brookhurst Street, welcoming guests to Little Saigon area. These signs have become landmarks for the Vietnamese-Americans in our community and beyond. They serve as a celebration of the many contributions of the Vietnamese community, along with positively promoting this thriving cultural hub. Diana Pham passed them every day with her parents. Her parents told her the story of Vietnamese immigrants coming to America to escape terrible conditions in their homeland, and how the signs served as a symbol of freedom. As the years passed, the signs began to show wear and tear. Diana noticed they didn't look as bright and clean as they once did, so she individually led an effort to restore their luster. As a Girl Scout, Diana knows the importance of serving her community. She used this valuable trait to lead a volunteer corps of 20 girls and Boy Scouts, and accomplished her goal, to repaint the signs and bring back their beauty and dignity. But it wasn't an easy task. The project was delayed twice by rain, and matching the exact colors of the signs was a challenge, too. Diana also had to plan meetings with her volunteers, go before the Girl Scout Advisory Board for approval, and lead two crews simultaneously on the day of the paintout. She says she spent a total of 65 hours on the project, but it was worth every minute. In addition to her fellow scout friends who spent their Saturday morning painting, Diana says she also had other great partners on the project: the city's Public Works Department, Little Saigon Foundation, and Lee's Sandwiches. For her efforts, Diana was recently given the highest award a Girl Scout can receive, the Gold Award. While this made her proud, she says the pride she feels every time she passes those two "Welcome to Little Saigon" signs is even more rewarding. At this time, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize this outstanding young woman for her generosity of time and spirit. We applaud Diana's leadership and her selfless efforts, which not only enriched her culture, but our community as well.
Thank you very much for what you do for our community. And she can shake her hands and shake her hands and into the pictures. They go easier. Now the paparazzi's turn, so you can.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Now if you'd like to say a few words to us.
I just wanted to say thank you, and I really appreciate the word that you have given me today. I would also like to use this opportunity to give thanks to the people that have helped me get this award successfully. First, I would like to thank the city of Garden Grove and the council for their nomination and for letting me be here tonight. I would also like to thank Keith Jones and Kenneth Nguyen for helping me prepare and set up for this project. I would like to thank Mark Ladney for preparing the great painting and for helping me set up the project, too. The staff from the council for providing safety precautions. And Little Saigon Foundation for the fundings. And I would like to especially thank the Boy Scout Troop 1789, Girl Scout Troop 2506 for helping me finish my Girl Scout project. And I cannot have achieved this without any of your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's wonderful to see young people at this early age are giving back to the community and doing something that benefits all of us. Thank you very much. And I can only say that this is probably just the beginning of things to come for this young lady. Thank you again, Diane. Okay, we'll have oral communications. Renee De Bozzi, this will be oral communications for the council, the agency, the sanitary district. So many people with the same name.
Hello.
Hello.
Support team. Mayor and city council members, thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to present to you today. In front of you, you will find a blue folder which houses our materials. This year marks the 12th year the local SGI members have had the honor of supporting the Community Services Department with the city's volunteer park cleaning program. And each month on Saturday morning, several local SGI members gather for the park cleaning. Our members really do enjoy the park cleaning, and it's truly meaningful to be able to work together to include the youth and to be engaged in our community to create positive value. Every year, the SGI USA, in cooperation with the Garden Grove Community Services Department, hosts the Earth Day Celebration. And this year will mark our seventh year. We really do appreciate you, Mayor Dalton, and council members Nguyen, Broadwater, Jones, and Doe, for your attendance and support throughout these years. Thank you very much. The theme for our event this year is Fresh Breeze of Youth from the City of Garden Grove. And this year's event will be held on April 16 from noon to 3 at Garden Grove Park. The monthly park cleaning is scheduled on the same day from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and there will be a display of exhibits such as the Seeds of Change exhibit, which contains 16 panels that weave together stories of the environmental choices we make and the wide-scale impact of those choices. It introduces the Earth Charter as an educational tool for making the vision of sustainable future accessible to all. The Victory Over Violence exhibit is designed to help young people identify and counteract the root causes of violence in their life and communities.
All right. We will also have an Earth Charter information booth with inspiring information to allow us a shared sense of responsibility for the well-being of the human family and the larger living world. We will be working together with the Bolsa Grande High School volunteers and OC Adopt a Park interns to support two youth booths. The kids booth, which will feature exciting educational and interactive tools such as planning seeds, face painting, and opportunities for children to learn about making a contribution to the environment in their own way. The Youth Rock the Air booth will highlight with interactive games and youth exhibits that youth can give back to the communities while developing friendships and making a difference. Residents are invited to bring their own picnic, enjoy the festivities, and learn how to make the difference. We'd like to mention that many youth have taken various roles of responsibilities to prepare for this event. We are determined to make this 7th Annual Earth Day Celebration the best ever. We thank you for this opportunity to make our presentation and especially invite you to come to join us at the Earth Day Celebration at the Garden Grove Park on Saturday, April 16, from noon to 3 p.m. In your packet, you will find some materials on exhibits that will be displayed at the park, as well as some helpful information about our activities around the world. We have also included a postcard reminder of this event. We appreciate your time. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you. See you on April 16.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's April 16, from noon to 3 at Garden Grove Park.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet. Peter Kaminski.
Good evening. My name is Peter Kaminski. I come to you from the museum in Anaheim. The reason I come to you today is for a countywide challenge that the museum is facilitating through Orange County called the Green Impacts Trash Artist Challenge. It's a program where children take trash and convert it into art. It's our second year running. It's only possible thanks to the support of Time Warner Cable is our presenting sponsor, Disneyland Resort are active with us, Hilton Hotels, Clean City, and the Orange County Department of Education. Now, last year, we got some amazing pieces, everything from a 12-foot, what they called a greenzilla, which was unfortunately made from the pizza boxes that the school had consumed in that week. Everything down to the finest piece of jewelry. So the challenge is very exciting. We're running it again, as I said, this year. And the reason I'm here tonight is because thanks to the support of Aggraman, we're able to make sure that there will be finalists from Garden Grove. So the program will guarantee at least one finalist, maybe three. Now, we are coming down to the wire. This program has been open now for about seven weeks, and the submissions close on April 1. So if I may ask three things. One is that you recognize the support of Aggraman. They've just been fantastic in allowing the schools in Garden Grove to participate. Two is that if you happen, and if I may leave these posters with the city clerk, if you happen to have a district office, Boys and Girls Club, after-school, any program, these have all gone to the schools, three-ish per teacher, have gone to the schools. But if you have any way of letting people know, then that would be fantastic. We have a lot of entries from Garden Grove. We would love more. And then finally, if it's possible, there's a large event at the Anaheim Hilton, which is run on about June 8, where we would love to recognize the finalists from Garden Grove by the presentation of someone from the city or council. So thank you very much for letting me present tonight, and we look forward to some great submissions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. As a member of the American Legion Post 555 in Midway City, I'm very proud of the efforts of our post to support many community activities. Today, in the council chamber, there was a presentation about the renewal of the signs of Little Saigon and the fact that the Boy Scout troop was involved in that. We also support a Boy Scout troop, Troop 314. And one of the most recent events involving the Boy Scouts was an honor court. For those not familiar with it, an honor court for the Boy Scouts is when a Boy Scout reaches the point of becoming an Eagle Scout, which is the highest level of a Boy Scout. At the recent honor court, one of the boys achieved that goal. Named Robert Haynes is a Garden Grove resident, and I wanted to congratulate him on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have another card, so I'll close our communications. Then we'll go to the agency. Ms. Baylor, at this time, will you call roll, please?
Member Dalton.
Here.
Member Doe.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Winn.
Here.
Chair Broadwater.
Here. We had two closed session items, closed session items, and we have absolutely nothing to report. We've gone through oral communications, consent items.
Move the items.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings. I have no items for consideration. Matters from agency matters. At this time, we will adjourn. I guess the next meeting is April 12.
Yeah, just so in case we need to, can you adjourn to March 29?
We adjourn to March 29.
Do we need to do that? It's only council. I know, but just in case, if we're gonna, just in case. Thank you.
You have something up your sleeve that we?
You never know. It's a week away.
Okay, we're adjourning to March 29. Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll convene the Garden Grove Sanitary District. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
Member Broadwater.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Member Winn.
Here.
Vice President Doe.
Here.
President Dalton.
Here. Okay, let's see. Should we go to consent items?
Move the item.
Second. A motion is second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
5A.
Mr. President, 5A is the annual appointment of representatives and alternatives to Orange County Sanitation Board of Directors. You do have a recommendation that the president remain as the city representative, and Andrew Doe be the alternate.
I'll move that issue. I'll move that. Motion is second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes, with Member Broadwater voting no.
No, I didn't vote no. I'm turning it around. Turning it around? Broadwater voting yes, and the rest of us voting no? Okay. Any matters from any of the? That would have been funny. Yeah. Any matters from anyone?
No.
Okay, then we'll, the next scheduled meeting of the sanitary district will be Tuesday, April 26, 2011, at 6:30. And we'll reconvene the council. And go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 6A through 6E be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or actions requested by a member.
Move the items.
Second.
Have motion second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, items for consideration.
That's a ward of contract with Alp Inc. for Garden Grove Boulevard and Euclid Intersection Improvement Project, and Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertile, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight's staff is asking council to approve a construction contract for the widening of the intersection at Garden Grove Boulevard and Euclid Street. The project will add an eastbound right turn lane and a second westbound left turn lane on Garden Grove Boulevard. Additionally, it will also add a northbound right turn lane on Euclid. On February 24 of this year, staff received six qualified bids, and Excel paving was determined to be the lowest qualified bidder, with a bid of almost, a little bit more than $1.1 million. The project will be funded using Mezzarem Turnback and grant funding, and some gas tax as well. Should council approve the construction agreement tonight, work can begin in mid-June, and we will complete it before the city's winter shutdown date of 12/18. This concludes staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Move the item.
Second. Have motion second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Ordinance is presented for the second reading.
Mr. Mayor, that'd be ordinance number 2791, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove approving amendment number A15811, an amendment to the planned unit development number PUD 14402, zone to add ambulance service as a permitted use subject to a conditional use permit.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move approval.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second. Call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor, it didn't register your vote, Mr. Mayor. Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, matters. Mr. Broadwater? I don't think I have anything tonight. Okay, Ms. Winn?
Yes, I want to thank Griffin's Construction for the generous donation to have the moving wall come to Garden Grove in October 6 of 2011. So if you could put that on your calendar for the end of the year. And also, I want to remind everyone that April 16 is Earth Day. I really enjoy the Earth Day by the Naissens Group. They put on a very good event every year, and our park gets cleaned. And that's always a plus for all of the participant or the people who go to the park. I want to thank them for their volunteer work. Happy birthday to Judge Sherry Pham, and also happy birthday to, happy eighth birthday to my son Nate. And just to remind everyone to please buy in Garden Grove and support our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Just want to reflect on this. Last weekend was the push cart derby over in West Garden Grove on Springdale. Sure is neat to see the kids going down that hill in their carts that they put so much time and effort into putting together. 10 years there now, looking forward to the next 10. They had a little trouble with the wind and rain this weekend, but other than that, I guess this is the first time they've had rain for that event, so just need to be there.
Thank you. Mr. Doe.
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Okay, a couple of things. Yeah, the push cart derby was really fun. Those kids just love it. And, you know, there was over 100 cars. Those kids just love it, and, you know, there was over a hundred cars, and they build them, and, you know, it's just amazing to look at the imagination for some of the carts that they had. I mean, just unbelievable. So, you know, next year, we'll give you fair warning, and if you want to go out and see it, you'll really see that the younger part of our community is growing up well and learning a lot of things like sportsmanship and participation and everything. There also was another event that I was at this weekend. It was at the Courtyard Center, and annually, the school district has art displays of the kids from kindergarten through the 12th grade. And I'll tell you, it really is very humbling when you go there and you see how talented some of these young people are. It's just unbelievable. I mean, I have a hard time drawing a straight line or a circle, and yet these kids, and some of them are, they're just so young, and the potential is just unbelievable. So it was, well, it was really an enjoyable time, and I really do look forward to that every year. I would like to adjourn the meeting tonight. In fact, two people that have passed away. Noni Brown, wife of Gary Brown of Gary's Woodworks on Main Street, passed away last week, and our thoughts and our prayers certainly go out to him and his family. And Patty Madigan, who was librarian at St. Columbas for over forty years, and it's a great loss. She just, she's seen a lot of kids come and go. She's mentored a lot of kids, and as far as in the library, she certainly encouraged a lot of kids to read and go on from there and have an interest in reading and pursuing other things that come with it. But it was a great loss, too, and certainly our thoughts and prayers go out to the Madigan family. I'm going to, oops, I almost forgot, happy birthday to Sherry, Councilman Doe's wife. And the next regular meeting will be on Tuesday?
March 29 at 6:00 p.m.
March 29 at 6:00 p.m.?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. We're adjourned.